Boarding in progress.
Hey Ed, good, how are you? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January Board of Commissioners Public Forum. I am not Mayor Tim Helms, and Tim regrets that he is not here. I am Tom Widmer, Mayor Pro Tem, and I will be presiding in his absence tonight. As I said, he regrets not being here. Let's just open with a moment of silence. All right. Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you. May I have a motion for adoption of that agenda? Motion from Commissioner Poushey, do I have a second? And Commissioner Otto, a second. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any, nobody said no, so we will now open the floor to public comments. And what I, I would ask you, if you would please, to step as close as you can to the microphone, and if you feel comfortable, please remove your mask so that we can understand you. But more importantly, the folks who are watching on Zoom can understand you. Come on up, Tom.
Tom Friss, 98, Chris Road. Two, two things I'd like to comment on. First is I was hacked, and the second or third person in Montreat that I've gotten emails from that had been hacked and asking for money and, and for something. And one or two people had actually sent in money and probably went to, not to my post office box, but to Nigeria. And I just want to warn that, that they'll take your name, tomfriss@yahoo.com, and add tomfriss1@yahoo.com. So to warn people around here that that's happened. And this is someone else from here, so I've got emails, so just a warrant, keep very careful. The second thing that I'd like to say is, I've really tried to stay as far as I could from this Board of Adjustment thing after the town hall controversy. And I just want to say how impressed I've been with the dedication of the Board of Adjustment, the people involved with it, the seriousness of it, and the two sides. And I just am full of admiration for the people on both sides, the civility with which this was done, and I just hope that it continues that way. But I just wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I think everyone feels that way as well, that Mark Spence, the Chair of the Board of Adjustment, equally said that. He was so thankful for the manner in which both sides conducted themselves with respect for each other. Anyone else? Ed?
I don't spoil the party after those comments. My name is, I'm going to read some notes I made. My name is Ed Kramer, and with my wife, I live in 134 Canola Drive. We've been property owners since 2016, and we've been permanent residents and registered voters in Montreat since 2018. And we come from small towns to western Pennsylvania. In addition to the beauty of Montreat, the singular impressive thing about this town is how well it is administered, from the elected officials and its boards to the professional staff, skilled workers, this town works to benefit and enjoy all residents. I say all this because what took place last week at the Board of Adjustment final meeting was in direct contradiction to this belief, understanding the experience that we have had for the past five and a half years. And first, let me make very clear, my comments and feelings today have nothing to do with the final decision of the Board of Adjustment, nothing at all. In fact, up to that point, the final decision, and my neighbors and other individuals that I meet and pound will tell you, that I kept an open mind and wanted to hear all the evidence, including the expert witness testimony, closing arguments of each side's attorneys. And as a citizen, I thought it was my responsibility to listen to as much of the testimony that I could. I never put up the yard sign. I never contributed to a fund, though I could have easily written a check. Why? Because I had faith that the Board of Adjustment members would conduct a fair and open hearing and discussion of the sworn testimony before them. And I do believe that without question, they did conduct a proper hearing. It was professional, and it was unbiased. But as a citizen, it was the promise of the Board that an open and public discussion of the issues, that is what I was most looking forward to by my fellow residents, that that never happened. I am not an attorney, but I do have some experience with jury deliberations and selection. And I only bring that personal experience to your attention because I can say that it is impossible that seven people could review 50 hours of testimony, evaluate expert witness testimony presented by both sides, experts that the Board of Adjustments itself did accept as experts, and render a decision within two hours. Common sense dictates that this is impossible. Fifty hours of testimony, multiple expert witnesses, legal issues that were commented on by attorneys of both sides, closing statements by attorneys from both sides, all this in two hours, impossible, unless members went into the hearing with their minds made up, or there were discussions of the testimony by board members ex parte, which means discussions of the testimony that was outside public hearing. While that may not be legally wrong, it without question violates the spirit of the law and the rules of the Board of Adjustments to conduct a public and open discussion of the testimony before deciding the issue. I do appreciate and I thank the members of the Board of Adjustment for their volunteering and the time that they donated to this town. But volunteering, well, an admirable quality that's carried with its responsibilities. I believe that Mr. Shalaski and Mrs. Chastain violated without question the spirit of the law and let the properties of, of the property owners of Montreat down by not conducting, as promised and advertised, a full and public open discussion of the testimony that was presented. A public discussion of 50 hours of testimony for the benefit of the citizens of Montreat, that just did not happen. I respectfully request the Commissioners not to reappoint Mr. Shalaski or Mrs. Chastain to the Board of Adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, for your comments. Anyone else?
My name is Shirley Mitchell, and I did not want to be commenting tonight. I've been a property owner since 1980 and have lived here full-time 27 years. I have a lot of experience with the Board of Adjustment, as some of you may know. I was at virtually every hour of the hearings, and I will respectfully ask each of you council members, if you did not hear the final two hours, to please listen to it. Before those final two hours, there was a wonderful, at the end of Wednesday, the end of Wednesday, there was a wonderful testimony by Kate Hayner, if anyone really wants to know the history of Montreat from 1903. And she presented it beautifully, and then a much shorter testimony from Harry T. Jones on the spirit of Montreat. I loved hearing it because I'm not old Montreat, and you can never become old Montreat if you did not come here as a youth. And it doesn't count that my father swam in Lake Susan. Anyway, I would just respectfully request that you listened to it. I was astounded that Bill Solomon was hushed up. Bill Solomon has lived here since 1949. His post office box number is one. Billy Graham tried to take it away from him, but he hung on to it. Bill Solomon, in the actual deliberations, was speaking eloquently toward the health and safety of Montreat. And I felt like you could hear a pin drop. And then the Board of Adjustment attorney cut him off. He then was silent. The two no votes were by Bill Solomon and then Kelso Hewitt, as you all know. But anyway, before you decide anything, please listen to somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Any other comments? Seeing or hearing none, may I have a motion for adjournment from the public forum?
I think I want to jump in right before we, we move on. And I want to be careful, not political. I want to be a neighbor. I want to be a friend. We all, we all live in a very small community. And I tell you, the Board of Adjustment people, they put a lot of time in. I'm, I'm very appreciative for what they had to go through. And some of the comments I've heard, now I'm sitting on the Board of Adjustments, unfortunately, I've tried to filter out because there's been some, some personal attacks towards, towards folks. And I thought, why do we want to do that in a small community? We're going to see, I, I've had dinner with Bill Solomon, I've had dinner with other Board of Commissioners people, great people. But, but we're, we're on a very fine line of demonizing people, and I understand some of the comments that it's not because of the decision, but I just, I just think we need to be careful on how we work. I mean, we've got another group that are trying to come up, and, you know, it's a tough position. So I just don't think it's, I can't sit here and not say, let's be careful how we treat our neighbors.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for his comments. Thank you, Commissioners. Any other words that would like to be expressed tonight? But Shirley?
And I didn't give my address. It's 201 Harmony Lane, of all things. Having, again, sat through it, when Brendan Hayner Slattery was giving his testimony, it's the very last testimony of the last day, you can get to it very quickly. He had tried to be a person of standing, but that had been denied by the Board of Adjustment. Brendan actually lives in this, this house, I think it's, what, 319? He lives there. That's been his home since he was graduated from college. And he reported that on the day when the MRA experts supposedly were doing their drilling in nine places, and it's marked on the map in nine places, and he's giving sworn testimony, that he watched, and they only drilled in three. So I think, number one, these huge notebooks that were given by, presented by each side, the members of the Board of Adjustment were not allowed to take those notebooks out of here until the final night. And it would have been an enormous amount of material to try to grasp. To me, watching it, they were, they didn't discuss the facts. It's like the facts were disregarded. And I say that as having been a member of the Board of Adjustment, having been party to a case before the Board of Adjustment, having been a person that used to really read the rules extremely carefully. I'm not looking for trouble in Montreat. I am not. But when you have that kind of evidence given, and it was just disregarded, that's rather shocking. I feel like the fact that there was a conflict on the evaluation, how they did the appraisal of the houses, well, instead of trying to figure it out, they just like, well, oh, well, like, we can't take it. So I know in an appeal that it's the facts that get appealed, well, there weren't any facts on a lot of it. So I'm, I'm just sorry. I, I hand my gratitude to the people that were on that board, but they carried a huge responsibility. And I don't, I think the fact that they wanted it all over in a hurry because I think someone was trying to go to Europe, or, and that's fine, but it would have gone into February. Anyway, I just urge all of you all, listen to it. If you didn't hear it, you know, I don't know what you heard, and I haven't heard the the mishmash about the members because I didn't want to get involved in that, anyway.
Thank you, Shirley. Any other comments? All right, Commissioners, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Otto and seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned until seven o'clock.
It's going to be a good news.
Yes, I've got it. It's giddy, it's got, he's taking the first person to dominate. I'm good. I've got a nominated Robert Slacks. You've got a nominee, what's the chance, Dan? We have six agencies, I guess.
I thought I was counting. There's seven members, regular members. We have Tim One, PJ, and two of them.
Let's figure that out. I guess I, I, you're guessing, Mr. Shalaski, the problem, I have, I have. Fashion.
Oh, no, we're starting to get.
Oh, he said. I didn't think that. How many people are picking out Shalaski? I don't know Bob Shalaski. He thinks that I haven't taken him. I know Bart, she lives across the street. She. She put, it's not the first to have it. It's not that real connection there, Mark. There are, you see, you know. Which are probably just about it. That conservative judge of Terry's. So I don't know, I can't imagine how it's going to be. Sort of the library. School teacher.
These are, you know, they were.
I also heard here that it was Kelso, who against. I thought it was Bill, you know. Or the watershed. We've had guests for three days, old dear friends that just called us at the last, this weekend, said, we're coming. They're spring, they live in Elastica, Tennessee. Separately, he and me, very good friends, our freshman year of college. Good friends in this life. Actually. They both went to a two-year school in Gulfport, Mississippi, Gulfport, Ohio. They both were there together. So Greg and Phillips dated, and he and Phillips grew for a year together. So Greg and I slept on the couch. At the Livingston area, a year together. Besides being a fraternity brother and good friend. And he got, and he actually set up, and I told him that.
Oh, wow.
So anyhow, they've been sitting in Elastica, Tennessee, bored of tears, and just needing to talk. And so for three days, we have sat in our living room and talked with Phillips and Brett. And at first, he had a book that, a daily devotion based on Scott Fett's book, and we went through that page by page, talking about, he just wanted to talk about, we just talked. The last day, I have, we've talked state. And that's, he's, we're doing our state planning at the end now, he's redoing his, you want to talk through. He's, he, he's, really does serious thinking, so we had a good time, talk, talk, talk. That's what we're starting. You can say anything. The similarities are, we both have only one son. Both our sons actually know each other, now they weren't here, here each other, but they were also fraternity brothers with century and straight. It's, it's, they're sort of a state management team, but they got sort of the same stuff going on that we do, structure. But even, we had, we left today early. But for three days, most of the time, we sat and lived and talked. I don't know if I spoke enough. I don't know how much talk we had. Have you guys? And I, I volunteer. Stormwater? I, 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 I'm in.
Yeah.
Man, it's. I do.
Yeah. Some people are talking.
Yeah, you must very well say. How are you, sir?
I'm doing good, Tom, how are you?
I've been working on comparing the dog. Some analysis, I rushed to get it done before a guest. I haven't. I haven't had a chance to prove this, but I'll send it to you, everybody in Alex, once I, I got a draft done. But then the guest stand, I have no. About that's additional information. Weaves.
She is, she is.
She is, she, she is. She and Jen. New Year's Day, we're shortening her address, we're high campus around Chapman. Right by your pit road, Chapman, yeah, looking at. And it's, it's one of these things, the dogs are chasing the bear. One truck came by and let more dogs out. Chasing the bear. The second truck came by later, and I'll, I'll send them. They admitted that they've been chasing this bear from Norfolk. Chased it purposely across Montree, up the mountain, over the ridge, so they could get the bear where they could shoot it. Where, you know, handguns, it could be the stars. They couldn't shoot him in Montree, but they purposely engaged in dog, uh, pranking bears in Montree, through Montree to get over.
Good evening, and welcome to the January Board of Commissioners Town Council Meeting. As I told the folks in the public forum, I am not Tim Helms, I'm Tom Widmer, and I am the Mayor Pro Tem. And Tim regrets that he was not able to be here tonight, so I'll be presiding this evening. Would you stand with me to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Also stand for a moment of silence. Make it seated.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to look at the agenda. May I have a motion for adoption of that agenda? Commissioner Fouché made the motion, second?
Second.
From Mason?
Second.
Okay, from Commissioner Blake. All those in favor of adopting the, the agenda, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. All right. Let's move on to Mayor Pro Tem's communications, although I did talk to Tim and ask him if he had anything to share. And I'll be sharing both together. We wanted, we do want to thank the Board of Adjustment for their volunteer hours that they put in, fifty hours of time that they put in. And, and I see many familiar faces from that, that hearing, that series of hearings. And I know that many of you put in it, probably that many hours as well. So we're going to see community in action as part of our new business. And I think this just coincides with the kind of community that we have and the willingness of people to be a part of it. And I'll talk more about that later. So thank you all for being a part of this community and the Board of Adjustment for their commitment of time. Let's see, thank you to the staff, particularly Angie, for the new sanitation calendar for 2022. One point on that sanitation calendar, you'll note that at the bottom, there is a new phone number for the police dispatch. It is mid-year, last year, we made a change. We sent out that change of the phone number, and it appears correctly now. But if you have old magnets or anything else of that ilk on your refrigerator, or you're using last year's calendar, make sure that you have the new number, and that number is eight two eight two five zero six six seven oh. And that is for non-emergency dispatch, and emergency, of course, would be nine one one. That's all I have in terms of communications. Alex, do you want to talk about the consent agenda?
Yes. Thank you. On your consent agenda tonight is the December ninth Public Forum Meeting Minutes and the December ninth Town Council Meeting Minutes. And if it's all right, I'd just like to go into my communications tonight.
Shirley.
I just want to make the board aware that we've been notified by the state that our MS four permit is coming, it's expiring, so we're working diligently.
Alex, could you explain the acronym of MS four? Or, or if you can't explain, tell us what it's about.
So it's our stormwater permit. It's, I cannot remember the, the acronym off the top of my head. But it is our stormwater permit, it allows us to discharge into waters of the state. It is required under state law, though we participate in this program. And there are a lot of regulatory strings attached to that process. One of them is it was need to do annual reports, which we have not done in a number of years, not knowing about the requirements, and that we need to renew our application. So we're working diligently with the Land of Sky, with Mary Roderick of the Land of Sky, and our Scott Adams as well, are working on putting the information together for that application. And I just wanted to make you aware of that, that was coming due next month.
Any consequences of this, Alex?
I'm not sure at this point. Also, I wanted to talk about the announcement that was made this morning, that my last meeting with the Town of Montree will be next month. I had, because I have accepted a job with the Town of Laurel Park. It was a hard decision for me to make, because I love this community, and Montree has been very supportive of me and very supportive of my family. And it was a decision that we didn't take lightly, but I really do think it's the best decision for my family. So at, on December, I'm sorry, on February twentieth will be my last day with Montree, as I'll be going to work with the Town of Laurel Park the very next day. I just want to thank this community for the support it's shown, for the, the experience that I've had in the last five years. They have been a dream come true. And I want to say thank you to the board, as well as to the community, for making that experience so rich for me. So thank you for that. And that's all that I have for my communications tonight.
Well, thank you, Alex, for your report. We were all somewhat surprised, we knew you had a bright future in front of you, we just thought maybe it would be a little longer with us. But we'll have a chance to more properly say goodbye in the, in the next forty-five days, or a little short of that now. But thank you for your service to us as a town.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is administrative reports that were in your packet. Commissioners, any comments or questions on those administrative reports? I have one, is Barry here? Is he sneaking away in the conference room? Barry, I've noticed the last couple of months, under the, the streets report, that the miles of road maintained are seventeen plus miles. And I thought we had like twenty-seven miles of roads in the town. If that's true, what's the discrepancy on that?
Honestly, I don't know what the discrepancy is, that's the report that, the number that was always on my records at the shop. So I'll just have to look into that and make the correction.
Okay, do you know anything about that, Alex? So we don't have twenty-seven miles of road in Montree? Okay.
I'll double check on that, though. We'll correct it if.
Go step it off.
I, I would add, Barry, that when the snow comes Saturday night, and you plow Saturday night, Sunday, Monday, it's gonna feel like two hundred seventy miles.
Commissioners, any other question on administrative reports or comments? All right, then we will move on to public comments. And as I mentioned during the public forum, if you're speaking, please speak directly into the microphone. And if you feel comfortable, please remove your, your mask. Again, mainly for the people that are watching it on Zoom, so that they can get a good pickup of sound. Janet? Yeah. It's right up here.
No, I'm Shannon Ingersoll, Eastminster Terrace. We're a little concerned about bear issue, and I don't know what we, Montree, what recourse we have, is this the time to ask, or would you rather it after your discussion?
Good, good question. Two answers on that, one, just a point of order. The public comment section is a time to make statements, not ask questions. The public forum is for that, and just.
I can do that.
Okay, well, and we've, we've just completed the public forum. But later on, on the agenda, the very last agenda item that we have tonight is a discussion of the bear issue. Okay.
So that would be, after that, we can ask questions about it.
Hopefully, we will answer your questions, and there will be a time for public comment after that. If you have some issues that you'd like to express, or some concerns that you'd like to express.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments? Well, moving right along, we will move on to old business of which there is none, and takes us then into new business. We have the first item of a referral to planning and zoning for a consideration of ETJ R four zoning. Alex, before we make a motion on that and vote on it, could you just give us some background on it, please?
Sure. The Planning and Zoning Commission has had several comments about the, the setbacks in the ETJ, and the difficulty of building because of septic and well requirements, where water and sewer are not available, and the zoning setbacks on top of that. The Planning and Zoning Commission basically moved to ask the commissioners whether or not you would like them to investigate establishing an R four district, which would be a new district with the Town of Montree, and to look into possibility of making, making that new district with the new zoning requirements.
Questions or any other discussion with Alex before we look at the motion?
And what was the reason for the new district?
Presumably to reduce the setbacks of the, the lots in the, what would be the R four district in the ETJ.
Do we, do we need to make a motion before we discuss, or we discuss now?
Motion first.
Let me just make a, or ask for a point of clarification. When we're talking ETJ, we're talking about the graybeard ETJ and the Graham property as well. Because.
You know, I'm not sure the distinction's been made at the planning and zoning level, and I'm not sure that that distinction has been made. I think the conversation evolved around the upper graybeard ETJ. But to my knowledge, and I could be forgetting something, but to my knowledge, the Graham property hasn't been discussed.
All right. All right. Well, let's, let's have a motion on this first, and then we can discuss it as a commission.
I'm going to refer to Planning and Zoning Commission investigation of the establishment of a R four zoning district with the ETJ.
We have a motion from Commissioner Otto, second? Hearing no second, motion dies. Moving on. We have a resolution that is before us, and again, I think it requires just a tad bit of background before we make the motion.
Yes, sir. So last month, the Commission approved a memorandum of understanding by motion with the Buncombe County to provide building inspection services when our building inspector was unavailable. Since then, we've come to learn that memorandum of understandings have to be passed by resolution, not by motion. So this is a resolution that would reaffirm what the Commission has already done.
Okay, so as you and I discussed earlier this afternoon, it is exactly the same wording that was in the MOU that we approved last month. It's just that technically, it can't be a motion, it needs to be a resolution.
It is the same MOU, no changes whatsoever to the MOU, it is just being established by resolution rather than motion.
Okay, any other questions of Alex before we take it to a motion? Then, do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve resolution two two dash oh one dash zero 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 one as presented.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Fouché, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander, any discussion? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of this motion say aye. And that means there are no unfavorable, so that motion passes. Our next item of business is an appointee for the Metropolitan Sewage District Board. Do I? You have that that suggested motion in front of you. Does anyone make that motion?
I move to appoint Matt Ashley to the Metropolitan Sewer Sewage District Board for a term of two years to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, and a second? Oh, I should say, a motion made by Commissioner Otto. And a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any discussion on this motion?
Yes, I would just like to say how much we appreciate Matt Ashley. He has been the current representative to the board and we appreciate, I appreciate his
Yes, he's been very diligent about attending meetings. We received a very nice letter, if you did not see it in the packet, talking about his participation, not only in the board itself, but on several committees and his unswaying attention to detail. So we do thank him for his service.
Yeah, I add my thank you to that, too. He served a long time.
Great. And will for a few more years. All right, we'll move on to a series of appointments. Angie? Oh, that's a good idea. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Matt Ashley to the Metropolitan Sewage District Board, say aye.
Aye.
And there are no nays. Okay, thanks, Angie. Gosh, where's the mayor when you're really here? All right, moving on to other other appointments. This is the Board of Adjustment. And why don't we just, we need to work them all one by one? And are you gonna start with?
Yeah, I'll start to get the ball rolling and move to appoint Robert Salaski to a three-year term ending on January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Adjustment as a regular.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Blake. So a second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just note, I know I've gotten some comments concerning Mr. Salaski. I'll just say two things that probably one of the most prominent builders that we've had in this community. He's built communities, houses, you name it, he's done it. So very knowledgeable, I think a good person on this position. And then I think the part that sticks out to me, he's a man of integrity and I appreciate that about Mr. Salaski.
Okay, thank you, Kent. Any other comments? Discussion? All right. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. You ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No unfavorable, so we'll move on. Motion passes.
I move to appoint Martha Chastain to a three-year term ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Board of Adjustments as a regular member.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Fouchet, and the motion was made by Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And no unfavorable. Motion passes. The next motion.
Mayor Protem, I move to appoint Arrington Cox to a three-year term ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Board of Adjustment as a regular member.
Thank you, Commissioner Fouchet. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no noes, so the motion passes.
I move to appoint Beth Barker to a three-year term ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Board of Adjustments as an ETJ member.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Otto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Blake. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of this motion, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
No noes, motion passes. Next motion, please.
I move to appoint Danny Sharp to a three-year term ending January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate one member.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Blake. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No noes, motion passes. And finally, for the Board of Adjustment, there's one more. Yes.
There was a mistake on this one. David Neal should be an alternate two member.
That's right. I didn't even read my notes there. If you heard that, the, there was a typo here. David Neal would be would be appointed as an alternate, actually alternate two. So whoever makes that motion, please make that change.
I move to appoint David Neal to a three-year term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Board of Adjustments as an alternate two member.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Alexander and a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any discussion? Not hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No noes, motion passes. I'd also, I'd like to thank these people, and we'll talk about that in a second, for being willing to serve. Also, on that committee are, and I'm sorry, let me say this. Rolling off of this committee are Ann Kelso Hewitt and Margaret Waterstrat, and we're thankful to them for their service. Staying on without their term expiring this year, but in the future are Mark Spence, Eleanor James, and Bill Solomon. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Commission appointments.
I move to appoint John Hinkle to a three-year term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Commissioners Fouchet and Otto. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to appoint Bill Shy to a three-year term ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Otto. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Blake. Any discussion on this motion?
I just will comment that again, Mr. Shy has just really appreciated everything he's stepped up and helped on. And I really probably could say that about just about everybody on this list, whether I know them personally, I certainly appreciate people stepping up to serve. And I do think we have a good slate, even though I have singled out a few, I think we have a good slate of people stepping onto these committees and boards.
Thank you. You're right on that. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion for Bill Shy appointed to a three-year term, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next motion for Dan Dean.
I move to appoint Dan Dean to a thirty-year term.
I think if he's watching, he just had a heart attack.
Okay, all right, a three-year term. Ending on January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Blake. Second, second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next one?
I move to appoint Julie Shell to a two-year term of an expired term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member.
Okay, we have a motion. Let me just clarify, that was appointed to a two-year term on an unexpired term. That's okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any discussion? Let me just say, too, that the reason that this is a two-year term is because if if agreed on, Julie will take over Mason's former position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mason's Mason's seat didn't expire for two years. Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, this motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Wade Burns to a three-year term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Fouchet.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion on this motion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously. Move on.
I move to appoint Liz Johnson to a three-year term ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Otto. Second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Blake. Any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing none, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously. As have the others. Last motion for planning and zoning.
I move to appoint Sally Stansel to a three-year term ending on January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate one member.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Blake.
A second.
And a second from Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously. And for this group of Planning and Zoning Commission, many thanks to Mason Blake for his tireless hours of work. And we're glad you're with us, though. The other point that I wanted to make sure everyone understood is that Alan Crawford is currently on and his term expires on January thirty-one also. Alan is the ETJ representative. He owns property up there, but in the revision of the ordinance that included Planning and Zoning Commission makeup, a change was made to the fact that he had to be a resident in the ETJ. Not not only is it there, but it's also in state statute and one sixty D that states that as well. So we're going to be working on that. Alan is also a tireless worker and we want to get him back on. And he hasn't moved up to the ETJ. Also staying on. There are none that aren't being voted on today. This is a wholly new committee in terms of their new expiration dates. Moving on to the tree board. We have three motions there.
I move to appoint Brad Hester to a three-year term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Board of Adjustments as a reg, to the tree board as a regular member.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Alexander. Second?
Second.
From Commissioner, what should I say, Fouchet? Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously.
Mayor Protem, I move to appoint Maggie Ray to a three-year term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the tree board as a regular member.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Philip Arnold to a three-year term ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the tree board as a regular member.
We have a motion from Commissioner Otto.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Blake. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Actually, Philip is taking the seat that was Ann Vincent sat in. Her term was up and we thank her for her time. And staying on this board is Grace Nichols and also on this board is Commissioner Alexander. Right. So we'll move on now to the Open Spaces Conservation Committee.
I move to appoint Mari Gramling to a three-year term ending on January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five to the Open Space Conservation Committee as a regular.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion was from Commissioner Blake and the second is from Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On this particular board, Mari is taking over Philip Arnold's position. And staying on this board are, if I can read, Mary Now Todd and Bill Shy. And one commissioner, is there a commissioner sign now that Commissioner Lentz was on this board? Okay, okay, good. I don't know if all of you were moved as I was. We made eighteen appointments of community members. You combine that with what we talked about earlier with the Board of Adjustment Commitment of ours and the community's commitment to the work of the Board of Adjustment. And it just, quite frankly, blows my mind in terms of the willingness of our residents to be a part of the work and play within this community. So I thank the community just so so greatly for their willingness to to make Montry a better place.
Do you remember a time when we had all positions filled?
No, at least not since I've been serving.
Yeah, so we really are appreciative to everyone.
You know, it was such a joy to, when names were coming up, to call people and say, would you be willing to serve? And have them say, well, think about it, but yeah, I'm leaning that way. So you're right, it's it's very special. Any other comments? All right, we'll move to this discussion item that we had talked about and that Shannon was asking about. Discussion of bear hunting effects within the town. It's, let me just first say that it is not an issue of hunting. It's not an issue of bear hunting. It's an issue of public safety. And what what has happened is we have heard a number of And what has happened is, we have heard a number of comments from people, and Shannon, you'll have an opportunity at the next public comment period following this to make your statements as well, and anyone else who wishes to. But we've had a number of comments from people who have been a part of or observed dogs racing around this town, unleashed dogs racing around this town during primarily the close of bear season. Bear season closed on January 1st, and the last week was pretty crazy. I myself observed, right in front of my home, a situation with loose dogs. We even have a resident who has it on video of dogs coming into, onto his driveway and patio. And we have a story of, in fact, I'd like to read part of that story right now, just so that you can get a flavor of what our residents during that timeframe may have been dealing with. This is from Aaron and Jacob Thielman. "On the morning of Tuesday, December 28, our family was packing up to leave a rental house on Quillan Lane in Montrete after spending Christmas with extended family. My oldest daughter, who is eight, and I were inside packing bags while my husband and our three youngest children, ages six, four, and two, were outside." Let's see, my husband was loading up the minivan and had the tailgate and two side doors open, and the children were playing in front of the house and in the driveway. "Through the living room window, I saw a large pack of dogs running south through the yard, directly toward the driveway where my children were playing. The dogs were coming from Mississippi Road and heading toward Assembly Drive. I couldn't understand why so many dogs were off leashes in Montrete. Then I noticed that one of the dogs was very large and realized with horror that it was a bear. I rushed onto the porch and into the yard, grabbing my four-year-old daughter and pulling her aside. The other children, the six-year-old and the two-year-old, were in the driveway. My mom grabbed them and put them in the car while my husband rushed to slam all of the open car doors. The animals ran between the back of our minivan and my mom's van, which was a distance of eight feet. I saw bright tags on the dogs' collars as they ran by and realized that they were hunting dogs." And some of you may have other stories similar to that. And I think we would all agree that it is not a hunting issue, it is a public safety issue. As part of this process of discussing it, Commissioner Blake looked into a couple of things regarding the ordinances, and he want to tell us the several things that you found that might give us some teeth?
Yes. You know, as Tom said, this is a public safety issue. And just trying to analyze what could be done to solve this problem. I think we need to look, there are no answers tonight, but we need to look at four areas. The first is whether or not the town, through its existing ordinance, can do some things to deter this type of accursed by these bear hunting dogs. The quick answer to that is we've got, we need to look at it, we've got two existing ordinances. One is a firearms ordinance. And that ordinance basically prohibits the discharge of a firearm. And firearm means a whole lot of things, including a pellet gun, within the town limits. But it does not prohibit hunting in the town limits. So as long as you, as long as you don't discharge a firearm, you can hunt in the town limits. And so if your goal is not to kill the bear within the town limits, but to kill the bear when it is over at the other side of one ridge or another, when it, where you can discharge a firearm, then you've not violated the town ordinance. But we have, in fact, evidence from some of our residents that that is in fact, at least one of the incidents, several incidents have been reported, is what took place. A bear was actually being purposely chased through the town of Montrete, up the east ridge, and over that ridge so they could discharge their firearms and kill that bear on the other side of the ridge. It really did, they were effectively hunting the bear all the way through Montrete. That's not a violation of our ordinance, because they did discharge the firearm with the goal of discharging the firearm and killing the bear on the other side of the ridge. So although we have a firearms ordinance, although it purportedly, people think it prevents hunting, it doesn't prevent the kind of hunting that's causing the safety problem that we're talking about. And so we also have a dog ordinance, that's a second existing ordinance that may prove of some benefit, but again, in its existing form anyway, it's not a deterrent. The reason is, there really is no, two reasons. One, you've got to have facilities to get the dogs and get them up when they're here, and we don't have that. But secondly, even if we did, the only penalty is that we can impound the dogs. The owner isn't assessed a penalty. All the owner has to do is pay the impoundment fee, and he can get his dogs back if we collect the dogs. There is no other, there is no other penalty under the existing ordinance. There is no citation you can give to the dog owner or the hunter for having run his dogs without a leash through Montrete. And so, and then again, it's not an effective deterrent. We can certainly look at other avenues or possible amendments to that ordinance to make it effective. I think that's one of the things we need to do.
Great, thank you, Mason.
Just two other things. We can also take a look at an ordinance which, new ordinance which prohibits hunting, period, or hunting bears in Montrete. Again, that will take some research against, what avenue we had with that. And one final thing, two final things. One, and I know, Tom, that you have been in touch with the state gang commission to get their involvement, and we need to see if their involvement, or perhaps Bunton County, McDowell County, those other governments can assist us in addressing this problem. Lastly, I think we could take a look at candidly looking at private landowners here in Montrete, or specifically the larger landowners, including the Mountain Retreat Association, to see if we could get their cooperation in posting the boundaries of their land so that under a, under an act in the state legislature of the Landowner Protection Act, we can actually assess criminal trespass penalties for these hunters if they're on MRA property, if it's properly posted. Right now, we can't do anything about it, even though they don't have the right to be on MRA property. They go there, and there's no, there's no effective penalty against it. If it's posted with either purple paint or signs, then our law enforcement officials could go up there, could cite them, and charge them with a second-degree misdemeanor, and it's an effective penalty to keep them out of Montrete, the dogs out of Montrete, where I think everybody knows, we've got children and kids hiking direct. So those are the areas that I think we can address.
Great. Before I open it up for discussion with the commission, I just have a couple more items that I wanted to mention. One, we need to make a distinction between the bear hunters in the lodge that's up right over on the toll road, and some of these other bear hunters. We've been in discussion, thanks to Tanner Pickett with MRA, who has a really good relationship with that group. And in fact, he spoke with them this morning, and and the president, he spoke to the president of the club, and the president just reassured him that these were not their people that were doing this. Their people have 1,200 acres of their own that the club owns on the other side of the ridge. And in addition to that, that backs up to Pisgah National Forest. So that's where they hunt. What we saw, for the most part, was activity from basically Lake Susan down towards the gate, with a lot of the activity taking place between my house, which is right on Assembly at Texas Road Extension and the gate. So we have friends in that group who watch out for us. If one of them wounds a bear, they call the police to tell us that they have wounded a bear. And in fact, the president has offered to sit with us and help us better understand what's going on with other bear hunters, and even talk about some solutions. We have invited the captain of the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission to be with us next month, and he has agreed to do that. So we will bring this topic up again at that time. And really just want to get the ball rolling in some discussions on this. Commissioners, other discussion on this?
Yeah, a few comments, maybe taking a similar approach to what Commissioner Blake was saying, but also maybe a little different angle. We were talking about, what kind of teeth can we have? And I certainly think that, and you just mentioned, I certainly think that the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission might be the ones that are going to give us more teeth, even more so than some of our ordinances here. I think that we've also, reaching out, what my understanding and talking with some of the local bear hunters around here, there are roughly two major clubs, and I think we start with those presidents of those clubs and talk with them a little bit about what can they do? You know, we, I think around the border, we've got a lot of posting of no hunting and such. But, you know, I think once those bears, the bears, I mean, just a couple of facts, this came from Citizen Times last year. Our bear population in this area is eight to nine thousand, growing at somewhere between 600 to 700 a year. So, so Montrete is a, is sort of a bear haven. I've seen more bears here this past two years than I have in the past thirteen. And again, maybe coincidence, but bottom line statistics say we've got more and more bears. Montrete's a safe place for them, and it's a food source. So I think when they start running these bears, sometimes they're going to, you know, I'm not going to say I understand the bear's logic, but I think they run towards safety. And then how good can they pull these dogs off? I think that's the questions we need to ask some of these, these club people. I certainly, as a parent, understand the concern with children. I mean, I'm concerned when I see a bear. I've had a bear literally back me up to my door at my house. I'm like, you own this place, you know? And it's very intimidating. That being said, and I don't feel like we are demonizing the bear hunters, but I know in times past, when we've had aggressive bears here, they're the first ones we called to come and see, what can we do to eradicate or get this bear moved? I think we're reaching out to them, and again, the North Carolina Wildlife. So, you know, I'm fine for looking at some ordinances, but I think if we can start with continued education and meeting with these guys, understanding a little bit more of what control they have, because it would be great, just about all these dogs have GPSs on them, can they pull those dogs back? You know, I'm not sure. But, you know, if they hit that ridgeline, and the hunters can pull them back, that's one good thing. I mean, the other thing is, I've been here fifteen years, and I know both, you can't live in this valley and not hear those dogs. I mean, you know, those two, it's been twice this year. I mean, if you're here, you're hearing the dogs. I say that just the education as well. If we hear the dogs, whether we like it or not, chances are they're running a bear. So, I mean, just that, it's like, well, common sense, we might not like it, we can try to address it. But that's what we need to start, getting our children in the sight. It's the bears that I walk up on that ones that scare me more than the dogs. But either way, they're both, you know, things we need to look into.
Thank you, Kent. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public comment. Again, I just ask that you come close to the microphone, and if you feel comfortable, take your mask off.
I'm back on public safety. Stormwater. I think that the first-
Would you introduce yourself and your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was assuming everybody had been watching from the beginning. I'm Shirley Mitchell, property owner since 1980, full-time resident, twenty-seven years. This is reference Public Health and Safety, Stormwater. I don't know who in this room lived here in 2004, did anyone? All right, in 2004, we had what Bill Solomon called a gully washer. And two hurricanes on two different weekends, two hurricanes each came up, one from the Gulf, one from the Atlantic, or whatever. And we had seventeen inches of rain in one day. Bill Solomon's comment was, no matter what kind of protection you think you had for the new hotel, it would not hold. And just as a matter of research, for whoever deals with the town's liability down the road perhaps, there were two of each side in this long hearing presented stormwater people. And of course, the MRA went first, and then the Montrete stewards went. And the expert for the Montrete stewards actually had developed the kind of system that the MRA plan put in. And he said, he's the expert, he started this, that their system would not hold. So something you have to wonder about, I believe that Robert Zalaski then said, well, no, no, they're doing this system. In other words, it wasn't what had been presented originally that the Montrete stewards were able to work with. Now they're talking about another kind of a system. I do not believe that the Board of Adjustment checked any of that, those facts, because they contradicted each other. But down the road, if Black Creek is polluted due to an overflow from the hotel, my question, can Montrete be sued? I don't know. I hope not. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Shannon?
I'm Shannon Ingersoll. I live on Eastminster Terrace. We do hear the bear dogs that we chase. Obviously, they don't know property boundaries.
They can't read.
No, not that I know of. And apparently, it's very difficult to train a hound as well as you could train a German Shepherd or a Kugel or a dog that's not quite geared to hunting. But I like what Kent said, and what Mason said, get some teeth and do the education. But I don't think they should be one after the other. I think they should be together. It takes a long time to get any of this stuff settled. And we, the people, the neighbors, are just as concerned as you are that those dogs would invade our property and hurt our children, grandchildren, pets. But the hunters, I don't know anybody that is 100% accurate every time with a gun. And if he misses the bear, who knows where the bullet's going to go? Is there, in Pennsylvania, there was a game law, no firearm shooting within, I think it was 500 yards of residential structures. I don't know if we have that in North Carolina, but it might be something to think about.
Thank you, Shannon. Good thoughts. Anyone else? Please.
Hello, my name is Mark Rogers. I live at 97 Shenandoah Terrace. I'm the one that created the video. So we've had the dogs, we've only lived here for a little over a year. We've got the dogs come through our yard. Our yard's not very big, so by our yard, under our patio, um, you know, and they've been chasing the bears. I've got it on video uh, multiple times.
Did it happen more than once?
Yes. Um, we've, we've had it at least in our yard twice last year and uh, and then once this year at least, which is the video that I think some of you have seen. That, where that video took place at, that's a shared uh, parking lot area that shared with an Airbnb. And exactly where those bears, I mean, where the dogs were, and, and in this case, we haven't seen the video. There was like at least ten dogs and they were chasing a bear. They got a hold of the bear and they were attacking the bear in the parking lot. So you have ten dogs and a bear in a fight in the parking lot. And in the same parking lot, it's, we share it with an Airbnb house. And there's been kids out there playing. And of course, and it's, you know, like typical renters, you know, you have random people from all over the country, most who have no experience with bears, you know, with, or, or hunting dogs, let alone the bears. And I went out there and the, the bear, I felt bad for the bear because the bear was being attacked and being mauled. And um, I went out there and I was trying to get the dogs off of the bear. Um, later on, I ran into the police chief and a, a couple of sheriff and Black Mountain person. And I was talking to them. They said that what I did was very dangerous that, and they, one of them had mentioned that even the hunters that own the dogs are unlikely to get in between the dog and the bear. Um, and so if this is, if this is a situation that even the owner of the dog feels unsafe with, well, then I think we can agree that it is certainly unsafe for residents and children. Now, looking into this, I'd found that, that the um, that apparently that, that's pretty open law that the dog, the hunters with the dogs, that they have the right to come on to private property for the collection of the dogs. And that was what, uh, when I talked to our police chief, he had mentioned that, that they are supposed to be coming on here to collect them. But you can see in the video, um, there was only, only, well, you can't, but it looks like in the video that almost no dogs were collected. And that was one thing that really bothered me was there was, and I've got more videos than what was in that, that one uh, that you guys have seen. But what I'd seen was one hunt, there was two hunters. One hunter got one dog. And then another dog followed him. And then he went, he went back up the driveway. And the other hunter, he came down, he did not collect anything. So at least eight dogs just kept going. And they didn't seem like they were that interested in collecting the dogs. And I, and I think what, one of the things that's going on is that they are allowing the dogs to, to chase the bears through or off the, off the Montree, say limits, so that they do end up back into the hunting zone. Um, and so I think it would be great to discourage that. Even if you do have the teeth in it, though, I don't know how enforceable it is because anytime, by the time the police chief, I mean, by the time the police get to the situation, um, you have the dogs and you have the hunter, you know, and then just say, oh, I'm collecting them. Um, when he may have just released the dogs right there, you know, a few minutes earlier. I have not personally seen them release the dogs, but I do, I do see the hunters with their trucks up on Shenandoah uh, Terrace periodically. And in this particular case, they were up there. And like I said, they didn't, they didn't collect the dogs. Um, well, when I'm collected, at least two dogs, but um, the other thing that uh, that I've learned about this is that they typically do have GPS, which means that they, they can know that they're coming into town. So that's one thing is good, that they can't just claim ignorance about them being in the town. Um, and that's, and that's why they either come into town or, you know, because like I said, if they possibly are releasing them in town. I don't know that they're doing that very often. I think it is very likely though, that the, that the bears, that they understand that this is a safe haven, um, and purposely potentially run into this, into this area. Uh, I've also heard though, that, that they should be able to have shock collars on it. And so theoretically, they should be able to get the dogs to get off of the bear chase so that they actually could collect them and so that you don't end up with a situation like we had where they're attacking the bear. I did not see any evidence of this in this case, though. They, they appeared, and this is what really bothers me. The hunters appeared to have no control over these dogs. And it was like, this was like a wild pack of dogs. Um, and I think that's something that we definitely uh, should try to make sure that we discourage. Um, so if there is a case of like, you know, shock collars or something like that, that perhaps we, you know, make that a law and or something about, you know, maybe how, how quickly they tried to get the dogs out or, or something, I don't know. But I realize this is kind of a tough thing. And unfortunately, I think the only real solution is to, is to make uh, the dog hunting illegal. You know, I think that's the only thing that's going to really be, you know, completely truly enforceable. And I know that the city of Montree can't do that, but maybe the city can talk to the commissioner and other stuff because my understanding is that a lot of places, because of things like this, a lot of places have, a lot of areas have made dog hunting illegal. Uh, because it is, you know, it's pretty barbaric and like, like we've seen, it's pretty dangerous.
Could you step up to the microphone, please?
Um, and beyond that, you know, the other the other instances that we recognized um, at our home. We are full-time residents here at Montree. Um, we, we moved here from Dallas and I feel like he made a pretty good case for this. Um, I feel like this is kind of a growing thing with, I know that Montree has been sort of a second residence for most people in the past. But the world is changing, you know, and people are moving. You can see that in the news. They're moving to beautiful areas. They're younger, younger people like us in their fifties or younger who are trying to invest in a community. Um, and we have different values. You know, I am not against hunting. I grew up in South Mississippi. You know, with hunters, they didn't use dogs, you know, however, you know, I understand conservation. But what I have witnessed here with the dog hunting, you know, and the fact that it's dangerous. You don't get between dogs that are on a hunt. You just can't do it. Um, and it's inhumane to the animals. Um, I have written, um, John Ager, who was a state representative for us about outlawing dog hunting in Buncombe County. It's outlawed in a number of counties in North Carolina. And I think for the same, you know, there's the humane society side of it, but there's also the property invasion side of it. And there's a nineteen fifty-four ordinance I found for the North Carolina Supreme or Superior Court that states, um, if hunting disrupts, you know, your private property values, and you can look it up, I can send you the email with the link to it. It's illegal. So the people that came on our property to collect their dogs, no matter what your police force does, and I respect that. Um, there's an ordinance that says that's not lawful. So there's different aspects to this. I just wanted y'all to be aware of it. I mean, it's but we're a growing community and there's people here. You know, like we're moving in, we want to make a home here.
Thank you for your comments and uh, we are all concerned about public safety of this issue.
Wade Burns to eleven Virginia Road, real quick. Uh, uh, really appreciated Commissioner Otto's uh, point. The Bear Hunters Club that's up on the road to Mitchell uh, is a separate group and, and the twenty-two years that I've been here full-time, they are able to do their hunting up there on the, uh, on the road. They, they actually bait the, the bears, they set up uh, feeding stations in anticipation of the season and so forth. And uh, that could be uh, Mr. Otto, that uh, you and the chief solicit the help of that club to identify folks that are just coming without discipline because they've demonstrated that, just when in the late, this is McPeters. So it took care of things up there. But that would be a way to do it without, you know, a lot of sort of impossible pushing around. But there, and that, by the way, the bear hunters, they own twelve hundred acres. And they have turned down an awful lot of offers. Twelve hundred acres to develop. And you can imagine how popular that would be. So they're, 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 they're friendly to everybody.
Wade, thank you. Um, maybe you uh, didn't hear the early part of my report, but uh, we've been in contact with them. Um, and uh, as, as late as today, um, and uh, we're going to be working with them.
I'm sorry, I had, I remembered what I was trying to remember earlier. Um, I don't think this is necessarily, it's definitely not all hunters. And I think that this may not be even all hunters with dogs. I think a lot of the issue is, is hunters that are being irresponsible with their dogs. And, and that's something else we could probably look into is trying to find ways that we can encourage them to be, uh, to be more responsible with the dogs, you know, like making sure if they have shock collars and stuff like that. And I, and I agree too, that, you know, that we should um, try to work with these organizations and uh, because, you know, the, the laws by themselves, you know, like I said, it's going to be tough to enforce. You know, so if we can work with the organizations and maybe that combine that with some
Put the mic closer.
But anyway, combining that so that, you know, we can find some sort of motivation, you know, for them.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, uh, we will uh, move into Commissioner Communications. Me and the commissioners don't have any. All right, uh, hearing none. Uh, let me give you some dates to remember. Uh, actually, you can read, do I have to read these? Um, you can read them right there. Let me just add that we would normally, you would normally see a planning and zoning meeting uh, in the month of February, uh, but they are not having one. They are, their next meeting will be March tenth. Uh, Bill Shai told me today that it was March, is it not? We'll, we'll clarify that. Okay, thanks. Um, the commission needs to now move into a closed session uh, to discuss a personnel matter. Um, whoever makes this motion, uh, we are not going to need as part of the motion, the last section that starts with and for attorney client privilege. Uh, it is only for a personnel matter. So could I have a motion on that? That we move into closed session?
I will move to enter into closed session in accordance with NCGS one, four, three, three, one, eight, one, one, six for discussion of a personnel matter.
Second. Uh, I have a, a motion uh, from Commissioner Fouché and a second uh, from uh, Commissioner Otto. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Uh, we stand uh, adjourned for the closed session, but we will come back afterward uh, to close the meeting out. And I just received a, a text from Bill Shai, um, and he said the meeting is in March. So it'll be March tenth.